All right, welcome everybody today to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board Authority. Today is February 11th, 2025. It is 5:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see that? I'll now call a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Artaselli.
Present.
Jackson.
Present.
Kaitine. Kilrain, District 5. Michaels.
Present.
Manaya.
Present.
Santos.
Present.
Parent representatives. Hoagland, OHS.
Present.
Shade, OMS.
Present.
Gibson, OES. Absent. Rousseau. OEN. Rousseau. OEN. Absent.
Great, before we start tonight, there's something I'm going to read out loud. So before we begin tonight, I'd like to make statement that the members of the Youth Council are present today. They're going to be shadowing the school board. While they may observe and engage in the discussion, please note that their commentary and questions are posed by the Youth Council members are not intended to reflect the official opinions or views of either the Youth Council or the school board. Instead, their participation is a demonstration of their civic mindedness and their desire to learn more about the decision-making process and to contribute in the conversation as engaged individuals. We appreciate your understanding as we foster these opportunities for youth actively participating in our community's governance. So thank you for everybody's patience tonight. I'd like to welcome our Youth Council and if you could please go ahead and introduce yourselves real quick for us as well, please. I'll start down here and send.
Hi, everyone. My name is Isabella Paragonda and I'm very happy to have this opportunity to shadow the school board and to be able to ask some questions.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Claire Johnson. I am a junior member and I attend Oasis High School. I am very excited to be here and to listen in and learn some new things.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sophie Garcia. I'm a senior at Oasis Charter High School. I've been in the charter school system since kindergarten in the South Campus and I'm extremely grateful to have this opportunity, not only for myself, but for my fellow members.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lexi Skorzac. I'm also a junior at Oasis Charter High School. I'm so happy to be here to learn more about our school board and the charter school system in Cape Coral overall. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. You're welcome so much to the Youth Council. That brings us to our approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Perfect. Do we have a second to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We also have a motion to approve B, the Minutes for the Oasis Classification and Comprehension Workshop that was took place on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025.
So approved.
Do we have a second?
So motioned.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bring this right along to item six, changes or adoptions to the agenda. Request for approval of the agenda of the regular meeting Tuesday, February 11th, 2025.
Motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our citizens input time. We have three minutes. Members of the audience who address the board shall step up to the speaker's lectern and give his or her full name, address the whom she represents. The proper decorum shall be maintained at all times. Any audience members who is, before we go on, do we have any members wishing to make public comments? Okay, I shall refrain from reading the rest and we will close the public comment. That brings us to consent agenda. Is there anybody wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda for further topic or discussion? Or Ms. Collins, is there anything that you wish to discuss further in consent agenda?
I don't think so.
Chairman, I'd like to pull item D.
Item D?
For discussion purposes.
Perfect. So let's go ahead and approve consent agenda items A through C. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion for consent agenda items A through C carries and we will discuss item D. And Mr. Kilrain, we will start the discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Basically, I pulled the request to accept a donation from the Güntherberg Foundation only to give special recognition to that donation. I think that Dr. Kilrain Colleton has been proactive in our community for many years and I think that it's worthy to note her recognition of the charter school and Oasis system as being one of the true gems of our community. And I think that it's a great, significant, certainly donation on her part, but I think it just goes to reinforce how valuable the school system is to this, to our city and our future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. And I think maybe Dr. John might talk about that more in his possibly. And yeah, I think recognition goes a long way because $70,000 is no small amount and we could not do that without that, so.
That's her third donation of that size.
So yeah, recognition is an understatement. That's the least we could do on our end up there. So yeah, thank you for pulling that. So since pulled, we will also go ahead and I will entertain the motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item nine, unfinished business. We have request for approval for the Resolution 02-25 Class Parity Adjustment Plan to address internal salary compensation. So let's start off with any conversation or this, we had a workshop on this last month.
You need your?
Yeah, do we want, let's take a motion first if we want discussion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? And this is actually to approve Resolution 02-25, which will be signed at the end of the meeting. So there was a few of us members who were not able to make the workshop. Is there any questions, comments concerning anybody who's not here or any further discussion on the topic? Mr. Kilrain, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just comment on, I think that it's a worthy action. I think it's well deserved. I wish that it could be more and it will be, I think, in future years. I think it's a step in the right direction, but only a step in the right direction. I would like to see parity made and an element of above parity for excellence that our charter school staff and teachers have produced and into the future. I hope that we can get there even in a more pronounced way, so appreciate it. Thank you, and I certainly will support this motion.
Great. Do we have any more comments or discussions on the resolution put before us? As I said, we had a lengthy workshop where finance put together a fantastic presentation, burning midnight oil on this and Ms. Collins as well. So I, you know, I think we had all of this information presented to us and as Member Kilrain had stated, it is just the first step, I think. And it is not what we would like to give, but it is what we can give, of course. But it is the first step in a three-year process that we are going to reevaluate and revisit. But yeah, is there anything else Ms. Collins would like to address on this issue? Please, sir. I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
I want to make clear that the 1.4 million mentioned in the resolution for one year as if it was approved as of July 1st, 2024. The board members will remember that this is being implemented in February 2025, so it's not truly 1.4 million. It's significantly less than that for this budget. That's all. Great, thank you. Attorney, and this is to, with an effective date of February 24th and I believe that it takes effect on March 14th, which is going to be when payroll can then take effect. Am I correct in this, Ms. Collins?
Correct.
So that's when the teachers should see this cost adjustment. Seeing no further conversations, yes, please ma'am. Ms. Kaitine?
Thank you. As I wasn't able to attend the meeting, watching it through the live stream, I appreciated that all of the questions I was coming up with were being answered. So that was fantastic to see that everyone was having, coming up with the same kinds of questions to make sure that we were doing the best that we can and coming up with the best option. I'm wondering, has there been any feedback questions, any additional comments that's come from the staff since the workshop?
Well, I can tell you that Kristy Belisiotis and I, HR manager, met with all four schools after this presentation. We did, we had some questions. The majority of the questions that we fielded were in regards to bridging. They were, there are more, more staff members than we anticipated that had left and come back and we didn't address bridging in this particular class parity adjustment. It wasn't something, it, as an industry standard, it's not usually adjust, addressed in our, you know, in our profession. So that was something, and at that meeting, council member Michael said, you know, is it something that we could address in the future? And we agreed that that was something that we would look at when we do our next study in 2028. So we will take a look into that because that was, that was biggie. The other questions that came up were the fact that why am I not getting credit for all the years outside of our system that I had? I've been a teacher for 25 years and I've only been in the system for five and I'm only getting credit for five again. To make it affordable for what we can do and as an industry standard, that's, that's the nature of the beast, unfortunately. It's not something that we could afford to do. We can't afford to, and we haven't ever been able to give a significant amount of time and dedication to analyzing life outside of our system because it's just not affordable for us. So we have, we adjusted a hiring salary schedule, which does have a range and that will give you credit for up to 20 years of your, of previous outside experience, but it's in line with exactly what our competitors are doing, particularly Lee County. They have the same kind of range. So to make a long story short, addressing previous years outside of the system is just not an affordable thing for us to do as a small charter school system. But when you consider the whole, and we try to say, when you consider the whole package, you consider your benefits, you consider the small size of the schools, you consider all the things that our charter school system has to offer. There is value in all those other extras. And people come for a reason. They could, they know what, what those reasons are. So those are the two big questions. One, we, yes, we will try to address next time. The other one will be very difficult to, to be able to do that. Now, there could be, well, we can come up with a variety of different scenarios at that time and we'll see what we can afford to do then, 2028.
So overall, it was well received?
Overall, I think it was very good and I think everybody's going to get a letter and it's going to say, here's what your salary is now. Here's your percent increase. Here's what it's going to be moving forward. And I think they're going to be, they're going to be very pleased. Now, the system is moving to an eight-hour, an eight-hour day for staff, not students. Students' school days are staying the same. So moving the secondary schools from a seven-and-a-half-hour day to an eight-hour day is also going to increase what they're going to, their take-home will be next year. So we'll have, here's what you make now, here's what you're going to make for the remainder of the year, here's what you will make next year when we're all working an eight-hour day. And then they also ask, you know, will our stipends be the same? Are you going to get rid of our stipends? Will we still get a master's degree stipend on top of our base? The answer is yes. So I think that was reassuring too. So I think really and truly, if you're a visual learner, you really want to see it. You want to see it, the figures in, in writing. And we said to everybody, if you have a problem, if something doesn't look right, if you think we've calculated incorrectly, make an appointment with us and we will review each case individually.
Thank you.
Any discussion in the pocket? Seeing none. Madam Secretary for Pastory, can we please call the vote out? Can we call the roll for the vote?
Artaselli.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Kaitine.
Yes.
Kilrain.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Manaya.
Yes.
Santos.
Yes.
In unanimous.
Motion carries. That brings us to new business. So we have 10A, request for approval of the 2024-25 Class Size Reduction Compliance Plan. This one is for Oasis North. Are we going to have Mr. Brown speak on that?
Yes, I'd like to call Mr. Brown to speak on the class size reduction plan for Oasis Elementary North. This is something that we have to report to the state every year. Are we in class size compliance? Now, originally, be previous to this year, there was a fine associated with being over your class size commitment. The fine is no longer. However, they do expect each school, if you are over, to submit a plan as to how you will get yourself back into compliance, according to the ratios the state, the state addresses. Now, Oasis North is .3 of a student over, which is, you know, not significant, but still, they still hold you, hold you to this, this compliance plan. So, Mr. Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Kevin Brown, Principal of Oasis Elementary North. Yes, we had a staff member leave during the middle of FTE and that really hurt us as far as being able to, we needed that teacher to get over, to get underneath 18 limit. So we will have that in place by next year. I don't want to say I'm not worried about it because I don't, I like to be in compliance, obviously, but that's kind of how it hit us this year. So I don't foresee anything happening next year that will be in any type of issue with this again.
So right now, the limit is?
So K to 3 needs to be 18 or under, 18, 0, 0, and under.
Okay. And if we had a second teacher in the room, that changes things, correct?
So that's, yes, so that's, we do typically have that and we're usually in place. We're usually fall about like 17.97, but this year, we just had a teacher leave right in the middle of FTE, excuse me, at the start of FTE, so we did not have that person in place to use that teacher to keep our class size under 18.
And have we hired a teacher in place of that?
So yeah, so this happened, so this happened early February here. So that was our second, our FTE for February was, I believe, like February 5th or something like that. So we have, I can't really make the announcements. We've done interviews and we're just waiting on the process for the process to carry itself out and we'll go from there.
Okay.
But yeah, we are, we are on top of it. Yeah, FTE would have happened in March. It'd probably be a different story.
So there should be a moot point in a few points, is what we're thinking?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have any other comments from members? No questions, please. Perfect. And then we also had one for the middle school, but that also seems as if it is already taken care of. Am I correct in that? It was, it seems like it was just an error in focus where we weren't recording the amount of teachers that we had in there?
Right, that is correct.
So any questions on the Oasis Middle School? Yes, please.
Just a general question, as we go throughout the school year, if we become out of compliance because of a teacher leaving, do we have to correct it at that time or do we have to report it at that time and then correct or which?
There are certain windows, so there's an October FTE that they take our count then and then there's a February FTE. There's actually five, I believe, FTEs throughout the year, but those are the two main ones during the school year. But yeah, we need to try to be in compliance by October and then we need to be February and then from there, basically.
So if, so when we report in October and February, if we are out of compliance, that's when the plan has to be put in place. It's only those two reporting periods that we have.
And the, the state will let us know, like you are off by, and it's usually honestly, most schools are probably .0 something 3 because it's, we try to be in compliance.
Okay, I'm assuming based on your performance in the past, you'll be proactive and it's done anyway. So I mean, there's no need even probably to require reporting that it's self-placing.
Yeah, no, obviously, it's, compliance is compliance and that's, obviously, I want to be in compliance. The school wants to be in compliance, so it just kind of hit at a really bad time for us and, but we are adjusting and we're going to make sure that we are in compliance as soon as we possibly can. Yep, appreciate that.
We have a question from Youth Council.
Thank you. On a similar note, I wanted to ask a question about the high schools. Obviously, as the population in our area is increasing, what does the charter school system intend to do in terms of high schools seeing higher influx of students coming into the schools? I did note that at the last meeting, there was the proposal of a P3 plan for a STEAM school attachment. Is that something that the charter school system is considering in terms of dealing with this?
I will be answering that.
I was going to say, I stay in my lane, so I'm elementary, so great question. I'd like to hear that as well, but yeah, I'm, I only oversee my school, OEN, so I try to stick with that. So, Mrs. Collins?
OEN is, the high school is expanding. There's, there's no doubt about it. We have 900 students now. Next year, we're looking to have about 950 students. We have the same issue that every school has in Lee County. We've got a big influx of students coming in and not enough seats. So your question was, we will be expanding. We can incorporate 950. It's going to be tight. But we're making some very creative changes to our curriculum, to our, our class sizes. Some classes, we only have 10 in a class, so we're going to make sure we expand those classes to a full 22 students or 25 students, depending on whether it's an elective or a core class. So we can accommodate our increases now. The problem is that, it's not a problem, our charter states that if you are a student that's got a seat in Oasis, whether it be in kindergarten all the way through, you're guaranteed a seat through 12th grade. So we have to focus on maintaining that promise for those internal students that if you got in, you get to, you get to stay if you choose until you graduate. However, that leaves very little room, if any, for outside students to come into our system. And that's what we're facing now is there's very little room because all, because all of our students are choosing to stay. When I say all of our students, I mean, the matriculation rate from one school to the next keeps increasing. At one time, it was, you know, 67%. We had plenty of room for outside students. Well, now it's at 98%, you know, depending on what school you're going to. So we have to be very mindful that we make room for all those students that wish to matriculate first. So it's something that the board is going to have to tackle down the road. What do we do? Do we add portables? Because even the internal students, those number of students are going, it's going to continue to grow. So we have a lot of planning to do in the near future. Did I answer your question? I did? Okay.
It's, it's a good problem to have, but a problem.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might?
I'm going to, Dr. Manak, please.
Just going back to recruiting for teachers, you had a number of interviews. How have you found the recruiting effort in terms of, are you, are more and more candidates looking to join us? Or how would you characterize that?
Well, a mid-year staff loss is just a challenge in general. Most teachers, they stick out their, even if they want to come to our system, they have a classroom. They could be at a different school. They're going to stick with their class. So it's just kind of a weird time to, to have someone leave your staff. So we did not have a ton of candidates, but we found one that we know is going to work out really well for us. So we're just waiting through the process to kind of get through and then I'll be able to make an actual announcement here, hopefully sooner than later.
But generally, the number of applications we receive per position have been dwindling. Over the last decade, I want to say, you know, we used to get 30 applicants for one job at an elementary level. Now we might get three. Or we have to go out and try to recruit people, you know, to come. And we have to, that means we have to put advertisements on Ed Weekly or other platforms to try to get people to, to show interest, so it's, it's difficult.
And I think that's a nationwide problem that we all know and we've always said we're going to have to start really thinking outside the box, right? And how we're going to tackle these issues because I don't think they're going away, right? Mr. Kilrain?
Yeah, my only comment was going to be directed at the P3 question. And basically, as, as Chair had mentioned, you're a victim of your own success, but it's a wonderful, to be that victim. I think that we've created a real quality asset for the city and people recognize it and they're starting to recognize it more. And, you know, quality breeds interest and a lot more people want to participate. The, the challenge that we face with, with an additional high school is one in that we not only have to cover the capital cost, but we have to make it operating at a level that, that we can cover the full cost. So that means all the, all the back office costs and all the other operating costs have to be into that equation. Now, there, there is a, a condition that's out there, I think, within the public, the general public, that we have to really start promoting the excellence that, and the asset value that this brings to the total city at large. And the magnet has become for other people to keep. And the magnet has become for other people to keep our youth here and the productive youth here, and to attract new residents to the city. And those things combined with acknowledgement that we are a city charter school, not a for-profit charter school, and marketing those in a way that the general population starts understanding better how we produce performance. And I think that's going to go a long way in getting better acceptance of getting us to that next step of being able to fund and come up with the total package. So, just wanted to add that. It's, it's a challenge, but I think it's a challenge that in the intermediate term, I think we can, can take it on and be successful. So, thank you. I'm sure she's committed to work for it, so thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to comment on it.
Yes, ma'am?
I have a question about the class size reduction compliance plan for the middle school. What is the size that the classes need to be for the middle school?
I believe it's. Yeah, I believe it's twenty-two. So, for our, our level, it's K to three is eighteen, twenty-two is four and five. I believe that goes into middle school. I might be incorrect.
It is twenty-two.
I believe it's twenty-two. Now, that encompasses, you might have twenty-five in one class and eighteen in another and all that stuff. So, it's an average.
And there's no minimum students you need to have in a class? No?
No.
Does the high school have a, that size as well? What's the size for the high school?
I believe that's twenty-five.
I believe it's twenty-five for core classes.
Okay. And there's a difference between the core classes and elective classes, like the amount? So, my question is, since we have two elementary schools, and our charter says that if you have a seat, then you can move on to the other schools, how have we been able to manage the size of two elementary schools filing into a middle school and then filing into a high school? How are we able to manage those numbers?
That was a very, was that your question, too? That was a very good question.
I had a similar one on class size, but. Oh, okay.
Do you want to?
So, yeah, so that's kind of what we're in right now. So, that's kind of what's going on. So, like Mrs. Collins said, years past, seventy percent of our kids would go to the middle school. Last year, I had a hundred and twenty out of a hundred and twenty-one students go to the middle school. So, it's just something I know they use with scheduling at the middle school level, and then, it goes into high school as well. It's just having the right people in the place. And that is above me as far as scheduling a high school. I'm, once again, elementary, so that's, I know elementary. But I know it's very tricky, and I know they work very long hours to get it done, to make sure they're in compliance.
We, we are lucky because we're able. There are students that will move out of the area. There are some students that will not come to our middle school. We are lucky because Principal Hopper can accommodate both class sizes. It's about a hundred and twenty students per school. The problem comes when we have a year where we have a bubble. And if we have six classrooms of fifth grade one year, because of the amount of classrooms in that building, there will be a year where you'll have to have seven classrooms of fifth grade. So, for example, it starts in kindergarten. We have seven classes of kindergarten one year. The next year, we have to go from six classes of first grade to seven classes of first grade. Then, the next year, that bubble moves up, and the bubble moves up. So, by the time, there are some years when we get to fifth grade, we have those bubble years. So, there will be some very large classes that are coming to the middle school. We, it's a scheduling, you've got to be very creative in how you schedule and how many classes you can offer, so that every student can be in a class, and it's maintained by class size. Is Mr. Hopper here? Can you see one, he's the guru.
So, yeah, so we have a bubble. This year's gonna be a bubble for both elementary schools. So, that's gonna be roughly three hundred students. Now, will all those students come? I'm not sure. But next year, thankfully, South does not have a bubble. I still do. But the numbers, that means that's twenty-five less students that are going to be there. So, instead of three hundred, it's two seventy-five. That works within Mr. Hopper's kind of goal as far as the students coming in. That averages out, you know, two seventy-five times three is his eight fifty that he wants to kind of be. That's not real math. That was kind of make-believe math there. Two seventy-five, yeah, whatever that is, so.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm sorry. So, my question was, Ms. Collins, you mentioned about like expand, expanding our class sizes, because we need that twenty-two. But I know especially as you go up into the ACE curriculum, especially when you get to senior or junior, there are classes that may be key for other students but aren't key for other ones, and then, the class sizes like dwindles. But especially as someone who is like applying to college next year, there are certain classes that I really want to take, but I don't know because of the class sizes. When does that decision get made? What classes are gonna stay, and what doesn't? And how does that decision get made?
We have student enrollment now at the high school. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to pick your courses for next year.
Yes, I did last week.
It's a mathematical equation, which is what Mrs. Corey always tells me. We have to see what the students want. We have to see where we can fit them. We need to see how many of each class we need to offer, so that everybody's accommodated, especially for ACE. So, that would be a question for her. She's not here this evening, but I know the scheduling aspect, and that's what it is when we say scheduling, it's very complex, and it takes quite a while to build that. But they build it based on what students A, need to graduate, or B, what students need.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm gonna piggyback off of what Councilmember Kilrain said just a moment ago, which is kind of a funny story. But my wife is actually a real estate agent, and she had three clients in the last six months who were considering Cape Coral as a relocation specifically for our charter school for their children. When they were on the waitlist and did not get accepted, they decided to go elsewhere in the state of Florida, because they did not get accepted into Oasis. That tells you something.
Makes the heart happy.
All right. All right, so we got a little ahead of ourselves on A and B. So, we're gonna go ahead and.
Thank you.
Sorry. We're gonna go ahead and look for a motion for ten A.
Show moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Looks like ten A carries. Do we have a motion for ten B?
Show moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten B carries. That's gonna bring us to ten C, request for approval to hold the private executive shade meeting on Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at four P M. I do have one quick comment on that one. It says that we're gonna hold it here in council chambers. Maybe this is a question for city attorney. Is it best to hold a shade meeting in council chambers? Or is that best suited for maybe one of our boardrooms?
I have to presume the agenda is correct, but I will follow up on your inquiry and make sure. If it is in this room, it wouldn't be recorded, and the public would not be welcome if it were here. But I will double check to see if there's another more suitable room for you. But the time, the time is still.
Time is the same. Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve item ten C with the caveat that we move it to a boardroom if available, same time, same place.
Show motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item eleven. Ms. Collins, report.
Yes, I really didn't have much of a report for us this evening. I did want to say that we've spent a significant amount of time, our HR manager, Kristi Belisiotis, and myself reviewing numbers to make sure that the teacher salary plan that we have in place is accurate. I wanted to thank Nicole and her team, because they crunched the numbers to make sure that what we wanted to offer, we could afford. So, it's taken up a majority of our time for the last several weeks, just to make sure that everything's accurate. We didn't miss anybody. We didn't leave anything out. So, that's where my brain has been. But I did want to let the board know that the CPTED meeting, I've been meeting with the City Public Works Department, and we've been reviewing the report, because we did get the report. It's going to be presented to council on February nineteenth at two o'clock. So, we are breaking apart all the opinions that Skynet came up with us. They are opinions, and we're, we're looking at who can, who can tackle what. A lot of them are redundant. A lot of them, we already addressed with our SROs, with the FSSAT report that you approve every year, with the assurances that you approve. A lot of it is already done. But there are some, there were some interesting opinions that our person wanted to share with the board. So, we're gonna break this down, figure out whose responsibility it is, and whether we agree with it or not. So, so that will be, we'll be ready to present to you at that CPTED meeting. And I also wanted to remind everybody that the Oasis Sports Complex meeting is going to be two nineteen at three thirty P M. That is a review of the thirty percent design, and it's gonna be great.
Great, exciting.
And that's all I have.
I know some of our, Youth Council had actually pre-prepared a couple of questions for Ms. Collins, if we're okay with that?
Oh, sure.
Great, who'll start with?
I'll start.
Ms. Percy, sure?
So, we do have a list of questions, and they range in different categories. So, we'll, we'll jump around. But I'll ask one of my questions first. I've been in the ACE curriculum since freshman year. And to me personally, I know people that have taken AP. They've taken IB at the Lee County level, and they've talked to me about it. And ACE doesn't compare to AP or IB. I truly do think that ACE is superior when it comes to that critical thinking aspect. And I'm beyond grateful that Oasis offers it as its main accelerated learning curriculum. That being said, like I said, the main thing that ACE, and what I really appreciate, is that every single class, no matter the subject, its main points are always enhancing your critical thinking skills. When it comes to things like global perspectives and research, that is a very research-heavy class. And a lot of the information, I took it last year as a junior. A lot of the information that we had to take when it came to our presentation, or in our essay, a lot of the websites and the learning resources that we needed were behind paywalls. And it's my understanding that a lot of Lee County schools have resources like Scope, for example. And I was talking to my global teacher today. They have resources like Scope, which is similar to JSTOR, where you can get scientific research. But right now, what we use is JSTOR, and it's behind a paywall for more than half of their articles. So, in my opinion, this really hinders our ability to truly grasp the information and get the best of the best. So, what can we do as a school to open up resources for our students, especially those in the ACE curriculum that really depend on them?
That's a great question. I think we need to talk to Principal Corey about this. Have you made her aware, or the administration aware, that this is a, this is a problem? Going to JSTOR versus Scope, which is a free resource?
It is not a free resource.
Okay, so we need to pay for these resources.
Lee County pays for the resource for all of its schools. So, I have not personally talked to Ms. Corey. I'm unsure if Ms. McLean, Kristy McLean, she is the teacher for ACE Global Perspectives. I'm unsure if she's talked to her about it. But this is just an issue that I was bringing up, how I'm gonna come to the meeting today. And she was like, well, this was a huge issue for you guys last year. Why don't you bring this up? So.
It's a great issue to bring up. And yes, we, we pride ourselves on doing everything we can to make school work and as efficient as possible to meet your needs. So, I'm sure I will bring it up with her tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll talk about how we can make this happen. Absolutely.
Maybe that's something we could piggyback off of Lee County with, possibly?
Yes, I mean, if they, yep, absolutely.
Yeah?
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
You're welcome.
Do we have another question for Ms. Collins, please?
On the same path as education, what can be done to make sure that students are prepared to enter dual enrollment as an opportunity for college credits?
What can we make sure we can do to prepare students for dual enrollment? I think a student has to be ready for dual enrollment. I think it's a big, and I wish Mrs. Corey was here. It's a lot of responsibility to take on. I think you have to be a self-starter. You have to be self-directed in order to do that. It's not for everybody. But do you, do you find that you've been given a lot of opportunity for dual enrollment at the high school level? Do you feel that your guidance counselors are communicating effectively about the opportunities dual enrollment presents? You're shaking your head, so what?
So, on that note, I am not a student of the public school system nor the charter school system. I attend a private school. So, of course, the opportunities and the different outlets are very different. But I did want to come in support of my fellow council members that do attend Oasis High School.
I think she's looking for some ideas to bring back to her school, too.
Dual enrollment's a great opportunity if your school allows it. It's a, it's really all about funding, because if you go to, if you participate in dual enrollment, that university or college takes part of the school's funding to pay for the teachers and the resources that you gain there. So, it's a valued opportunity for our students, but it does cost the schools. So, I'm not quite sure how it would work in a, in a private situation. It's something you're gonna have to talk to your principal about. If you, you know, have a relationship with your principal, you can address it with them. It's, it's a cost factor that unfortunately, some schools just can't handle the cost factor. Even though it's a benefit, it's not cheap. Because in addition to the FEFP funds that they take, the state dollars, we pay for textbooks as well. And it, they can get pricey. Did I answer that? Yes, okay.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
So, I'm gonna kind of change the course a little bit to go talk more about students and kind of school environment. So, my question asks pertaining to mental health. Obviously, it's a big, it's coming to be a bigger thing as, you know, we move along and getting into high school especially, with all of the stress and the drama. So, my question is, what can be done to increase access to psychologists and mental tools on campus? And more so, the support of teachers and administration? Because as somebody who personally has a five oh four plan, I do feel that at the high school, teachers don't know about it. And whether they don't, I don't know why. So, it's kind of like my question is, is what can we do to make sure these students have the support and can come into a safe environment at school and not feel different? Or how what they're going through outside of school or in school is negatively gonna impact their schoolwork? Because at the end of the day, is when we go to school, we want to learn. And that should be our, like, our number one, like, object on our mind. And I think that sometimes it can be tricky, because like, again, mental health is this huge thing, and sometimes, like, five oh four plans, not that they're not being followed, but they're not being regularly reviewed to where like, I have to like remind a teacher that like, I do have this, my five oh four plan. Or not feel ashamed or scared to go to a teacher and say like, I have this, my five oh four plan. Like, I'm kind of asking like, what can be done to ensure that these students feel safe and comfortable at school?
Okay, that's a good question. You are one of our students at Oasis.
Yes, I am.
So, you and I are gonna have a conversation after this is over about your five oh four and the needs that you feel that aren't being met. I do want to tell you that our system's kind of unique, because we're smaller. Your teachers know you by name. Your guidance counselors know you by name. Your principal, and I know she knows who you are. And I, I believe that it's, they're more invested in our, in our students because we're a small system, and we try to meet your needs as best as we can. So, we're unique in another aspect, which is that we have a social worker. And that's what she does, she goes to all four schools. But she is there to address student needs. And she's there to recommend outside agencies that can help if there are services that are outside the school that you need to engage in. Schools are limited in the resources that they can provide because A, finding those people that function in that capacity, guidance counselors, psychologists, which we usually counties, we don't hire our own, social workers, we can't find them. We can't hire them. And, you know, it's, so it's a burden on, on the people that we do have in place. That's part of the reason. But I think we do a good job. I mean, I remember Ms. Corbin has a QR code that she hangs on the walls. And if you want to talk to her, you log in with a QR code, make an appointment, she comes to you. Your guidance counselor should also help you. I know Ms. Corbin is going to, she's gonna try to get four interns next year, so that each school has not only her as a social worker, but also an intern that can do general things for you. But very specific counseling is, can be done by her, if that's what you're referring to, or an outside organization. So, we try to provide the best services that we can, albeit they're limited, because those people out there in the community, we find are limited as well. So, let's talk about your five oh four, because I know, I know for sure that we've got an ESE teacher, or we've got Ms. Walters who handles five oh fours. We have all sorts of intervention-type programs. But the teachers should know what each student's requirements are. You have to remember, a teacher has, I don't know how many teachers, how many students, that they have to remember all their different assignments, one hundred and forty, five, one hundred and fifty students. So, there shouldn't be any shame in going to your teacher and saying, listen, I just want to remind you that my five oh four says that I need this. And it shouldn't be something that you should be ashamed of. But we're going to have a conversation after this and then find out exactly what the issues are. It's not an easy, well, here's my solution to solve this problem of mental health. It's not simple. And if anybody tells you it's simple, it's not. We're working as hard as we can on trying to find staff that can address those needs. But we do have and recommend other outside resources to help if need be.
I'm going to entertain one more question to, for time's sake. If you could, please.
Thank you. Sorry. So, on, I kind of want to switch again over to the topic of safety. And not so much as like physical safety because I feel the charter school system, that is one of our strengths. I feel very safe at our school compared to like, I know other public schools have metal detectors and all of that, but I feel like we're doing a great job there. But one problem that I see damaging the most of my peers is the, um, the protection of, from the curiosity of drug and alcohol. Like, I know so many people, and this is like one of the hardest things for me to go through high school, is freshman year, we're all starting out, we're all on the same pace. And then you can slowly see that people dwindling and they're getting like trapped in that vortex of, they have other priorities. And those priorities are vapes, nicotine. I know we just implemented Smart Pass, which I think is a good way to crack down on that because it does limit people going to the bathroom. But once again, it just really makes me sad when they're, where I'm losing my peers to substances. So, how are we furthering cracking down on that and making sure that's becoming less and less of an issue?
Well, I think the new, the Pass program is a very, I, I think it's definitely worthwhile. And if you, the board doesn't know what that is, you, it's a computer-based program. You have to sign out to go to the bathroom. And you can only send to, so many students out per couple of minutes. Am I right about this? And if there's a conflict between students, the computer system will address that conflict and not allow those two students to go, to leave the classroom at the same time. So, that's one thing. Dressing vapes, um, you know, it, and drug and alcohol use, it's, it's very, very difficult because it's hidden. You know, kids don't share that. They don't do it in public. We had the drug dogs come in at one time and that, I, you know, that was scary, I'm sure. But we did uncover certain things. And that's a priority that Ms. Corey is, she's going to do that. She's going to bring it in periodically. We have discussed a variety of things like vaping detectors in bathrooms. You know, locking certain bathrooms because there's no supervision in those areas. So, behind the scenes, we do a lot of those, we have a lot of those conversations. And we're always working and looking at different programs we can use to make things better. It's, that's, that's a tough one too. And if you have any suggestions, we'd like to hear them. You have to remember, we're, we, we can only control what happens in the school building during the school day and at school events. Things happen outside of the school day, on the weekends. And unfortunately, it kind of meanders into the school day. And, and that's unfortunate. But we, we, we've got to be responsible for what happens in our buildings during the day. And it's, it's a huge task to undertake. We're, we're trying as hard as we can. And there's always, you know, we've got Fortify Florida, you, it's the anonymous reporting tool. You've got an SRO. You've got trusted teachers you can talk to. And I know you can always go into the administrative office and talk to your principal about things. So, those, those elements are there. You have to seek them out in order to find them. And I'm sorry, I couldn't give you a better, or thorough response.
So, I think it's very interesting to get the, a different perspective from the students up here and hear the questions because we sit here in a much different role than they do. And it's definitely gives us a, a perspective we don't always get. So, Ms. Collins, thank you for being gracious to take the time to listen to each one of them and answer the questions now that you did.
You're very welcome. And I just want to say that last year when we had the youth council here, I was very impressed by the question they asked. Was it you that asked the question about doing, um, who asked about doing?
It was Ms. Garcia. About doing the drills at a separate time?
Doing drills during, during the lunch period because we've never done a drill during lunch. And what do we do? And we're scared and we're concerned and we need to know these things. And I, we all went back as administrators and said to each other, wow, this is really, this is what they're worried about? And they want us to do these extra drills so that we all know that we're safe. So, that resonated with our administrative team. And that's exactly what we did.
So, just a comment on that from last year, when I did make that comment about doing the drills at sep, at the extra time, um, during lunchtime, that was because of some, a situation that happened at North, just as a refresher. We've had that, I think, two or three times. And from what I see from my group of peers, they do appreciate the fact that the school did that. It is, it doesn't go unnoticed because this is not something that, and I know that we fall, the people like Ms. Gorzac, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Imperagonda, we all fall into a certain group of those, you know, students that strive for academia, we're, we're nerds, we like, we're on the council, right? So, the, but that action of doing that drill in inconvenient times touched more than just our group. It touched other students, right? So, safety is not just something that we are concerned about. It's something across the board, no matter what academic path, extracurricular path that you're on. But like I said, just to cut it short, it is appreciated by all the students that that was done. And it was done within the next week of me bringing it up. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to city manager's report. And who's going to present that to us tonight?
I don't know that the city manager, okay. For the record, Crystal Feast, Acting Financial Services Director, standing in to report that there is no report this evening.
Music to most people's ears. Moving along to Mr. Kilrain's report.
You know, I'll never give no report. But I, I'm just sitting here impressed as hell. I've watched Youth Council over the years and always was impressed with the type of student and type of persons that we're raising in this community. I sat up here today and I'm awestruck. I'm awestruck because I, I think my experiences of being able to talk with the superintendent and I, never asking your superintendent a question, but it was always a negative connotation. If you're going to the superintendent's office, you're in trouble. And that was not only for me, it was for all of my, my friends in school too. And I, I didn't do it frequently, but it happened occasionally. It was never pleasant. But I am very impressed and I know our future is bright. The diversity of questions asked here, the sophistication professionalism shown by you guys, it's a pleasure sitting here with you. I know our futures are great as a result, if you are an example, and I think you are. And you may characterize yourself as nerds. I certainly don't do that. And I certainly think that there are a lot of others out there like you. And I want to feel that it's the parents, it's the system, and it's the classroom and the teachers there that have done an excellent job in parenting and raising our youth that will be our leaders tomorrow. And you are becoming our leaders very quickly. And it's greatly appreciated for all that you do, all you contribute, all your passion, and also the system itself. So, thank you very much. And that's all I'm going to report.
Very well said. Thank you, sir. That brings us to the chair's report. So, I'll make this real quick. I, I kind of want to circle back to our strategic plan a little bit because I think that we haven't discussed it in quite a while, something we haven't talked about in a while. And in light of today's vote, I think that it's incumbent upon us to talk about it for just a quick moment. So, strategic goal plan number one is student achievement. I think that speaks for itself. You know, we're, we're breaking all the records. We're shattering all the records in Lee County. All of our student achievement is through the roof. Ninety-nine percent graduation rates. Every record, you know, we, we're crushing it. So, no need to speak on that one so much. I'll go over to number three, which is community engagement. Thanks to Ms. Kathy Paul Evans, we're, you know, starting to conquer that. You know, we're starting to get our word out, as Mr. Kilrain says, that we need to do. I think we've been working on that one for a while. And I think that with Mr. Santos, we're going to be doing a little bit more of that as well because I see him doing a lot of stuff on Facebook and throwing our name out there too. And I think we're rounding that corner as well too. And with our presentation that we're going to have pretty soon too, with our STEM initiative, that also goes to our strategic plan number three with community partnerships, with getting, you know, some of this funding and grant funding and making a niche for ourself. But it's really going to be number two that was always going to be our problem, right? Number two is to identify, recruit, and retain high-caliber educators by offering competitive salaries, shared educator values, and opportunities for professional development. Now, we definitely offered professional development. We, you know, sent people to other states and we tried to train them on the new cutting-edge technologies of education. We were able to do that, but we couldn't, we kept missing the mark because we could not retain high-caliber educators by offering them competitive salaries. Well, we've now been able to kind of do that, right? We've, at least we've shored up that gap a little bit. So, I think today is the first time that we have been able to achieve all three of our goals in our strategic plan in the history since we've made this plan. So, I think that that is monumental. That's huge that we've been able to finally do this. Because number two, I thought it was just going to be way out here. We were going to be chasing it, chasing it, and chasing it. But we finally caught up to it a little bit. So, you know, Dr. Naya has always said that strategic goal is something that we should always be talking about at our meetings. So, I thought that I would bring that up today. And yeah, all three goals, not accomplished, but working towards and getting there. So, that's my report. And I just want to say congratulations to everybody involved. We're getting there. That brings us over to our foundation report, Mr. Cerny.
Hello. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Gary Cerny, President, Cape Charter Foundation. Welcome, student council. I love seeing you guys here. It's awesome. And just for you, I'm going to tell you what we do, real quick, a few bullet points. We, we are a Florida nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation with the sole purpose of enhancing the already awesome Oasis charter school system. We have the ability to kind of maneuver around year after year to, you know, pick and choose what we see as the biggest need. So, like around COVID, we would go and we'd actually, for some of the teachers that were out, you know, sick, we, we would actually set up a program where we'd deliver things to them, you know, the, things like that. So, just for example. So, we, we've also put in addition to the money we raise, we've also put into place some of these traditions that are, in my humble opinion, are becoming more and more important, such as the Lighthouse Awards and things of that nature. People just count on them and they're cool, they're special. And, you know, you have to have some, some traditions. You know, with a little bit of tweaking year after year, make sure we can still, you know. And then so, and so, but what we, here's the shortlist of what we do. We do support all four schools. We provide mini-grants to all four schools throughout the year. So, teachers and admin, administrators, you know, can, can apply for mini-grants throughout the year. There are specific mini-grants that we do. Most of them are going to be educational in nature, but we have opened up grants for sports and clubs and things of that nature. And a couple of years ago, I think we gave like fourteen grand. And one, we just had a little extra, I don't want to say extra money because there's never extra money. But we had the ability to fund some big needs for, for the athletic department, so that was good. And then we also took on the OHS Boosters Booster Club. We kind of absorbed that. They dissolved as a company and so we're, they were literally a corporation. We absorbed them. So, we've been working very hard the last two years. I think that's going quite well. And we have all these sub-accounts now for the different teams and clubs. So, they can effectively, the, the, the coaches can come. And they, of course, ask our athletic director, is this okay? Especially when it comes to uniforms and things of that nature. We don't want to have little stars and weird things on them. They need to be consistent. Anyway, we do that. And then we also do a rally event every year. It used to be at the German American Club. It was huge. It was ex, extreme amount of work. And so, we've sort of metam, it's metamorphosized, for lack of a better word, through the years. We did golf. Now, this year, we did cornhole. It's good stuff. We actually made a nice chunk of money and the togetherness factor was huge, I thought. I know multiple people in this room were there and not a single person looked upset. And a lot of people stayed really late, which is usually a good sign. Thank you to those who did. And then we also have a party. So, coming up February 28th, we do have a party event. Again, that's not a big moneymaker for us, but the, it is the cutest thing you've ever seen because we have performers from all the schools, whether it be choir, theater, whatever. That's important too. It's not always monetary. It's sometimes it's just having, again, those traditions and the togetherness. And these kids are happy. They're all like, oh, there's so many people watching me, you know? It's, it's special. It's something different. Then we, this year, we're, and I'll come back to this in a second, but we're having our first ever gala event. We're, we're a little nervous because it's expensive and it's classy and it's nice. And I will get back to that in two seconds. And then we do the Lighthouse Awards. That's one of the traditions that I think is extremely important. And I think most people agree. It's where we celebrate the teachers. It's like the golden apples of the charter school system. It's a lot of fun. Teachers get to have fun and be celebrated, you know? It's good stuff. And then we also do scholarships for the seniors every year. They're not huge, but we do give out multiple and I, I do think they make a difference. And it also lets us see what these seniors are capable of. And when you read these, somebody's bios almost want to make you cry. You're like, wow, this kid literally has like a 4.9. They're taking care of their sick mom, you know? Stuff like that. It's actually very heartwarming, you know? So, anyway, and we do, we are, we have a, an all-volunteer, selfless board, very hardworking, very diverse. And, and so, there's that. That's what we do. So, now back to the, oh, and I'm sorry, Lighthouse Awards. We do have nominations. I just want to throw these names out there. These are the finalists. So, we always send three finalists from each school to this event. And it's a big surprise. I don't, nobody knows who's going to win. I don't even know who's, I mean, literally, there's like two people that know who's going to win. I stopped paying attention. I'm like, I don't even want to know. So, for Oasis High School, Jack Concannon. I'm sure you all agree he's awesome. All these people are awesome. Edward Godfrey, Janet Odmanson. For Oasis North, it's Amy Cardwell, Alexandra Rediker, and Susan Stafford. Oasis elementary South, Vivian Aguilera, Allison Cameron, and Joelle Carr. And for OMS, Oasis Middle, Lisa Alexander, Kelly Henry Herbst, and Carrie Porfideo. Lots of good names on here. I'm going to say all good names. Those are the finalists. The event is on April 4th. It is invite only, only because we are just out of room. We used to do it at the Cape Yacht, at the Yacht Club. The Yacht Club is, I don't know what's going on with the Yacht Club. It's not there. So, we've done La Venzia the last, since the hurricane. So, and let me get to my other notes. So, back to the gala. Oh, lordy. Where's my notes? Hold on. Okay. So, um, so for the gala, this is, this is an event. It's March 29th. It's at the Weston Cape Coral Resort at Tarpon Point. It is going to be classy. And it's, it's, it's a new venture for us. Not only is it really expensive to hold, but it, it, it's an incredible amount of work. So, we definitely need a lot of help. But the goal of this event is to have an event that reaches outside our typical circle of donors. We're kind of shaking the same people down every year. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but that's exactly what it is. I mean, I myself give a, I mean, I like literally write checks all, it's crazy. So, it's good. I love to do it. But we need to venture across the river, so to speak, a little bit. So, we're going to try to find some new donors. And not to mention, and in addition to that, we want to also showcase this awesome school system. Why not? You know, I mean, I know we have a huge waiting list. So, it's not like we're trying to recruit all these kids to come. But there are a lot of benefits that come with looking great. And this school system is looking about as good as you can possibly look right now, I think. So, that's a big help. And then, and we also have a great time. You know, it's going to be a classy event at the Weston, you know, classiest place in Cape Coral, as far as I know. And then, so this is what we need. You ask, yes, what we need? This is what we need. We need table sponsors. And all this, by the way, is on capecharterfoundation.org or capecharterfoundation.com. Both work. And so, we need table sponsors and staff sponsors. I'm happy to say I looked at it earlier and we do have a few staff sponsors already, which is great because it's a hundred and fifty bucks a head. It's not the cheapest event in the world, but it's also costs us a lot of money. So, it is really cool. Some people, you can choose the staff member that you, that you want to sponsor. Or if you do not, there are some 20-year schools. We're going to have like kind of a hierarchy thing where there are some, not hierarchy, a, a tiered selection process of who gets these sponsors, sponsored seeds. There are six teacher, correct me if I'm wrong. I think there are t, six teachers in this system that have been there 20-plus years. Is that correct? Yep. And so, we're going to probably start there and then kind of work our way down. And so we're going to probably start there and then kind of work our way down, we'll definitely have to consult a little bit. We want to, we, our big thing is transparency and fairness, we always want to be super, super fair and be able to show you why, you know? So, that's, you know, there are some other sponsorship opportunities there. The other thing we need for anyone and everyone, please share, you all received, I think, an email with a sponsorship sheet and, and the actual invitation, it's just one page, real easy reading, I think we're on revision three now. But, and it is a twenty-one-and-over event, by the way, just, that was one of the revisions. So, but we need to share, and I can put it up here in two seconds too as well, just in case you want to take a picture or something. There will be a silent auction, a live auction with unique experiences, like one of them we just got was lunch with Tito Ortiz, random, his kids don't even go to the school, what a great guy, he's literally, you know? And so that's cool, some unique opportunities. And, you know, if you have any connections, this is another thing we need, if you have any connections for auction items, like vacation rentals or unique experiences, anything you can think of, we're not talking like little staplers, I mean, like something decent, you know, something, I don't know where staplers came from, but I had to get a little weird, right, I always get a little weird. But, but yeah, unique experiences, we could definitely use that. It, it brings in money, and I mean, if you do, like a vacation rental, people will overbid, they'll bid more than the thing's worth a lot of the time. So it's, it's just such a win-win and, and we, and we, because we are 501(c)(3), everything is completely tax-deductible, we will get you a letter, we'll do all that good stuff, and you can, you know, write it off legitimately on your taxes. And then, again, tickets are available for purchase and on capecharterfoundation.org or dot com. There are some sleeping rooms at the Weston, so you can make a staycation weekend out of it if you want to, you do get a little bit of a deduction on the room rate as being part of this, but you do have to book by February twenty-eighth, or else we start owing them a lot more money to hold those rooms and, I don't know, you know? So, other than that, that's pretty much it, and I would also just like to thank our board, I might mention all their names, but if you look at our website, they're all on there, one of them is Jen right here, she does not like it when I say her name, but thank you, Jen, our treasure, she's amazing. So, anyway, that's it, any questions?
I'd like to congratulate all the nominees for Lighthouse for sure.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
And here's this, can I, can I post this, put this on there real quick? Gala invitation?
Yeah, if you could just.
What do you do? Put it down here?
I know he's going to do something in the back there.
He's going to be to reflect you or... What do I do? I don't want to start doing weird stuff here. Oh.
There we go.
There we go. Can you see that? Oh, ah, yeah, I probably should have gotten a paper, huh? Well, this beautiful thing is on capecharterfoundation.com, I don't know if it's well.
I can send it to the board.
Thank you so much.
We have, we have a couple of questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, go for it.
I have two questions, first is about the scholarship. For lack of better words, I've been stalking that page every single week.
I love that.
Yep, and I'm going to be the first one to apply because I've known about it for like about two years now. When does it open?
We are, we haven't set a date, but we're thinking right after the gala. You know, we're going to do a little bit of a shorter period this time, because when we open it for too long, people have this tendency to wait till the eleventh hour.
Yeah.
At least from our experience, and then like last year, we were like, where are all these applications? We only had a few, and then, I'm telling you, I think Caroline Pecchiolo got like, I don't know how many she scored, but in the eleventh hour, we had so many. So, yeah, yeah, it'll be, well, the gala's, yeah, the gala is the twenty-ninth, and I think April first was definitely thrown out there, is, that's probably when we're going to open them. And we will absolutely have, you know, Ms. Collins and other, you know, the principals blast that out in their normal fashion, you know, how they get information out to you.
Yeah, thank you. And then my other question was, I understand this is a twenty-one and up, I obviously don't fit in that category, but the Cape Coral Mayor Scholarship Fund, they, the youth council did volunteering where we took the names of the people that did the silent option, auction. I'm just wondering if there's any spot for this, since it is for the school system for student involvement? I know that, I'm the battalion commander at Oasis, so I run the program and I oversee it all, and my color guard was here from, because I wanted them to be here so that you guys could see how amazing and beautiful they are, maybe even just a color guard going there to present the colors, what, if that was something that we would be, if we could offer or help volunteer in any sort of way?
Well, for starters, I love the fact that you want to be involved, and you guys are obviously all going somewhere in life, that's very obvious to an adult, like that's been around for a minute, so, awesome. But, I, there, there, we have a foundation meeting in the morning, I will absolutely bring it up. We have a monthly board meeting, and I will absolutely bring that up, because I think, especially the color guard, it's a phenomenal idea. Having students attend that event might be...
Not even attend, like, what I'm saying is that for the scholarship gala, I was there all night, but that's not what I'm suggesting for this to happen. Like, we're there, maybe we can help set up if you need that, or...
Oh, well now you're talking.
Yeah, I mean...
It starts at six.
I, I'm seriously, if, if we can help out with that, especially in the youth council, but we're made up of students from all over the, all over Cape Coral. But, any Oasis students, I know my JRTC people, they are going to want to...
How do we, would we just, how would we communicate with the JRTC?
Right through me.
Okay.
Because I, like I said, I run the program, so everything kind of funnels into, into myself, or Lieutenant Colonel Morrow is our senior army instructor, so that would just be an excellent volunteer opportunity. Again, I just want not just my youth council, but my, my cadets to be involved in our school system and our community, so.
I love that, yeah. And, 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 by the way, like, you will, we will absolutely use you probably a lot, like, in other events for sure, this one I just need to kind of check, you know, we're, it's a new one, so we have to really, you know? But I, I think the color guard actually sounds really good, the help pre-event sounds really good, you know, and thank you for offering, and we will absolutely a hundred percent be in contact very soon.
And it, the event itself reminds me of the military ball that the Lee County does, so it's basically, as battalion commander, there's fifteen other schools and all the commanders from those schools get together and we plan a military ball. It's a very ceremonious, very prestigious event, we have a missing man table, color guards, saber arch, presentation, presentation of the colors, color guard, same thing, and awards that we give out, and it's, it's a huge event and we plan it all year round. We, you have to do specific etiquette classes for it in the JRTC class, it's, it's a gala, just like that. So, again, I know you said you were going to reach out, I'm very excited...
Like really soon, like in the next forty-eight hours kind of thing. Like, we have a meeting tomorrow, like, I'm not joking, like, we would love your help.
Okay, well, that's totally okay, I know that...
I just don't know to what to capacity yet for this event, but probably a decent amount, but we will absolutely...
Send over the information and I'm going to get with my, my SAI to see if we can do anything, especially a color guard.
Absolutely.
Or an honor guard, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, a hundred percent.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, yep.
I'm going to take one down here if you don't mind, Ms. Mc...
I just wanted to go ahead and emphasize her point a lot. Our school does a gala every single year, it has a huge turnout, it'll be a huge benefit to the charter school system, and I think taking advantage of that student help will be a very, very huge benefit, because our school always reaches out to the students, they help set up, and it definitely takes off a very huge weight off of everybody else who has to worry about other things, so I just really wanted to emphasize that.
Oh, that's great, thank you. Let me ask you a question, what, if you've been doing this for a little while, what, what are your takeaways from these galas? What do you think makes a successful gala and what have you learned to not do?
So I think definitely reaching out to a lot of local businesses, different doctors' offices, all of those people usually attend the events, they participate in the auction. What we do is we reach out to different clubs in the school, different associations, and they help put together baskets, they reach out to all of the parents and have them fill out a form if they're willing to give anything up for the auction, if they have any connections. I think really putting it out there with the parents, the students, they always come together to put together items to auction off, different vacations, rentals, all of that, that's what we do to make a successful gala. I would be, I would be more than happy.
We need all your help. You guys are awesome, I'd seriously appreciate that input, legitimately. Are you, you go to private school, right, and then you're Oasis?
Oasis.
Oasis, yeah, yeah, I think I saw you, were you at the wrestling meet last weekend? Oh, sorry, random, okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, you see why I'm amazed?
They're incredible, yeah, I mean, they, yeah, they're much smarter than I am.
With respect to the gala, how are ticket sales going?
They're, they're, they're starting to kick up, they're starting to kick up, and there is, there is limited seating, so I anticipate we will fill up, I hope we will fill up. The sponsorships are a big component of that, of course, I mean, you can have a full room and, you know, we're not, this thing's not going to be a huge success if we just sell out, it's going to be, I mean, we've already got some nice sponsorships, don't get me wrong, we definitely need more table sponsors because there's a decent, you know, quantity of those still available, whereas some of the other sponsorships are just, you know, you check one off and that's it, there's only one. So, but, you know, so far, it's, it's moving, but it's getting close, you know? So, and it's, we could use all the help we can, I mean, any social media, pu, blasts, anything that you could do, and, and a lot of you have been really good about it, because I've actually seen some of this stuff come, thank you so much, like, that's huge, and just, again, every penny of this goes right back to the kids and it just allows us to do more. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cerny.
Thank you.
That brings us to staff reports, we have Dr. Munston.
This is Dr. John Omenson, he is our Director of STEM Education for all four of our schools.
Good evening, Board, can you see the presentation? What do I have?
We need a STEM student to come help here.
Don't, don't ask the tech person to do tech. There it is. I just hit buttons until it works. So, good evening, like Ms. Collins said, John Omenson, Director of STEM Education. I just want to give you a quick update on some of the things that we've done this school year. And before I start, these are just some of my favorite pictures that we've had in the past year. So, everything from kindergarten up through high school, just to give you an overview of kind of what we do in our program, everything from low-tech to high-tech, hands-on learning, straight across the board, giving every student within our system the opportunity to engage in STEM learning in some way, because we truly do believe every student has a pathway within this field, and we want to spark that interest in varied, varied ways. So by giving kids these various opportunities, we hope that they can see that there is a place for them at this table and that they want to continue learning within these pathways. So, starting off, back in November and December, the four schools, we worked together to submit some applications to the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association, ITEEA, went through a lot of application processes, submitting answers to specific questions, submitting curriculum materials, letters of support for some of these, and as a result, we were awarded seven different awards from this organization. All four of our schools, for the first time, are recognized as STEM Schools of Excellence. So, starting four years ago, Oasis Middle School earned the first one, the following year, we added Oasis Elementary North, last year, we added on Oasis High School, and then this year, we completed, and all four schools have now been named STEM School of Excellence. In addition, two of our teachers submitted applications for individual teacher excellence awards, and Christiane is at Oasis North, and Lori McLean at Oasis Middle are both recognized as teacher excellence. That particular award required a great deal of reflection from them, required them to submit lesson plans, submit letters of support, they had to submit photographs of them working with students, it was a very lengthy process that they went through, and both of those women are extremely deserving of this honor. Finally, Oasis Elementary North has been named Program Excellence, so Oasis Middle School was awarded that last year, Oasis Elementary North has awarded that this year. One elementary school in the state has awarded that award each year, and Oasis Elementary North got it for Florida this year. So, yeah, very exciting. We have a team that will be going to the conference in St. Louis in early April to receive all of this, they'll probably need a second suitcase just to bring all this stuff back, but very excited and very proud of the team that I work with in creating this, this program that we have. Mr. Jackson mentioned community engagement before, I'm going to talk about it real quick now. We have been engaging in a lot of outreach events with our local community. One of the things that we do like to do is give our students opportunities to engage in authentic learning, where they can apply their STEM understanding to a problem within the community, either locally or nationally. Our first graders cut and designed acrylic snowflake ornaments that were donated to, to senior citizen communities. The gallery is the one that Oasis Elementary South donated to, and Michiana's donated to another senior living facility from the north. Over two-hundred-and-fifty of these snowflakes were sent out for some holiday cheer for the members of those communities. At the middle school, students were working in their digital fabrication class, they created digital designs of bag designs for trunk-or-treat bags for the city's trunk-or-treat event, through a review process where they had to meet specific criteria regarding the branding of the Oasis logo. About ten designs were selected and the students then utilized their skills in sublimation printing and heat pressing to create approximately eighty bags, which were then given out at the trunk-or-treat event. Our digital design class at Oasis Middle School entered a partnership with the Cape Coral Animal Shelter last semester, it's going to be continuing this semester as well. We took the classes there for a field trip where they got to learn about the shelter, and they utilized their skills in digital photography as well as digital design and poster making. They created advertising posters for the animal shelter for use on social media, which we gave to the shelter, and they said that you do plan on using those in the future. We'd like to thank as well Kaiser University, they hosted the Second Annual Forensic Dig Day for our biomedical engineering students to get some hands-on experience in forensics technology, as well as crime scene technology, as well as Sunsplash. They had our maritime engineering class for our annual sea perch, which is our underwater robotics competition. So, they opened the space for us on a day that they weren't open to the public, so we appreciate them doing that, so that our students could really engage in that work. And these are just some pictures from those various events, you can see the trunk-or-treat in the top left, the dig day is in the top center, another trunk-or-treat, top right is one of those acrylic snowflakes that was designed by a first grader, and the two bottom corners are pictures from our sea perch event at Sunsplash, and then bottom center is from the trip to the animal shelter. Next week, yeah, next week, February nineteenth through the twenty-second, the Oasis Middle School TSA Technology Student Association team will be going to Orlando to participate in the state conference. These students have been working all year long on various problems in a variety of different events. There's going to be forty students attending and they're competing in twenty-seven events, everything from microcontroller design to video game design and fashion design. I happened to be in there today when the student participating in fashion design brought in the dress that they created, and one of the students put on a quick fashion show for the rest of the class, it was incredible. So, very excited to see how they do next week, this is the largest group that will be attending from the middle school in the history of the school, I believe. So, very excited for them, wishing them the best of luck, and Mrs. McLean has done some great work with those students. Quick save the date for you, we have our Second Annual Oasis Elementary Robotics Competition, it will be on April twenty-sixth, nine to twelve o'clock in the Oasis High School gym. Feel free to attend, we've got teams from both elementary schools working with Michiana's and Ms. Pink as their coaches, they're currently working on building their robot for the event. Over the next few weeks, they'll be practicing with it, learning how to drive it and solve the various tasks that they'll need for the competition. Last year it was a great success, we're expanding to include more teams this year. And with that, Ms. Yanis, Ms. Pink and I worked last year to kind of reflect on the process, we submitted a journal article to the Technology and Engineering Educators Journal, it was reviewed and accepted for publication, so we were able to share kind of our learnings from that with the education community outside of our schools. A few weeks ago, we had a team from Reality Works and Bird Brain Technology that came to visit our schools. So Reality Works is a national company focused on education in the CTE space, and Bird Brain Technologies is an organization that creates a variety of different technology products to engage students in physical computing and understanding creative design. We had the CEO and the Vice President of Business Development from Reality Works, along with the founder of Bird Brain Technologies, come visit us. We're working with them on the development of a pilot program at the middle school level for the hummingbird robotics kit, and our students at the middle school were able to showcase how they were engaging with that curriculum. Also, while they were here, they had the opportunity to see classes at all levels. We had a really terrific visit with them, we got some really nice feedback that we're currently working on acting on, and they're coming back in a couple of weeks to bring more people to see our kids in action, which is a great thing, we have a really good working relationship with them. Excited to expand opportunities for our students at other schools because of... Excited to expand opportunities for our students at other schools because of this partnership in the future. And you can see the bottom picture, and the both pictures actually. That is, and the man in the red shirt is Dr. Lowers. He's the creator of the hummingbird and he's the founder of Bird Brain Technologies. And when the students who were utilizing his product learned that he was the one who created it, it was amazing that they would just come up to him and ask him questions and kind of pick his brain because he was the guy who made this device that they've been using. So, they had a really good authentic opportunity to have some really good conversations with him, learn from him, the process that he took to get where he was. And that was just really great to see. So, we're excited to welcome them back in late February. They're going to be visiting Oasis North and Oasis Middle School at that time. So, talked about it earlier. Do you want to give a huge thank you to the Gunterberg Charitable Foundation and the Cullaton Family for their donation? Like Mrs. Collins said, this is their third donation of $70,000 that they've provided to us and we're extremely grateful for that support in supporting the development of our program. This will go to support all four of our schools. So, it'll give us some long-term financial backing to ensure that our students have the supplies and equipment that they need to engage in this work. We also want to thank the RISD Family Foundation. They gave us their final pledge of $30,000. This is a $120,000 commitment over four years specifically for the development of the maker space at Oasis Elementary North. We're extremely grateful to be part of that, to be partnered with that organization, to have received this funding from them over this time in the creation of this space and giving opportunities to students at those schools. With these donations that we've received, this brings us well over $1 million in external funding for our program in the past five years. So, thanks to all of these partners that we've had, we were able to create the program that we have today. Finally, last thing I want to talk about. I've worked with teachers from each of our four schools in the first semester. So, Christiane is at Oasis North, Gina Fury at Oasis South, Amy Palowski at the middle school and Tamika Breeze at the high school on the development of an artificial intelligence guidance document. So, the team worked together to identify best practices in artificial intelligence in schools. We kind of summarized their findings, split up the work and wrote together a guidance document that we gave to Mrs. Collins and the principals to review. So, I'm really grateful to those four women for the work that they did on this and the, the amount of effort that it took to get this document together. Along with that, Christiane went through a process of applying for a Generation AI Education Fellowship, which she was accepted for. Christie had to leave early. She was going to speak on this tonight, but I have her notes, so I'll read them out. Christie is an incredible leader within our STEM program. So excited that she was able to have this opportunity. She, the, there were thousands of applications for this from across the country. 90 individuals were selected for this. Within that 90, only 30 were classroom teachers and Christie was one of them. And they couldn't have picked a better person. Also, among those 90, only one person was from the state of Florida and that was Christie. So, very excited for her. I'm going to read what she had to say about it and then that'll be it for me. So, this is from Christie. "I was honored to be selected to attend and participate in Generation AI's Community of Practice, which took place in Chicago last week at the Google Building. This gathering brought together approximately 100 fellows with the goal of fostering a strong community. My cohort includes a diverse group of district leaders, school administrators and teachers representing 38 states. Together, we explored the transformative role of AI in education and its impact on the future of learning. The International Society for Technology and Education, ISTI, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping educators use technology for innovative learning, is leading this initiative. With funding from Google, ISTI is equipping K-12 teachers and students across the country with the skills and knowledge needed to use AI effectively, safely and responsibly in both the classroom and the workplace. Over the next 15 months, I will be collaborating closely with select teachers in this cohort to tackle our communities of practice's challenges while sharing research and resources to support one another." So, very excited to see how Christie approaches this problem of practice that she's developed, which is really focused on applying AI at the elementary level so that students have a solid foundation at that level to increase engagement. So, that's it for me. If there are any questions, happy to answer. Thank you.
So, I'd like to first start off by saying thank you so much to our community partners who have so generously donated this money to our STEM programs because without them, none of this is possible. So,
Absolutely.
First and foremost. Second, I think it was you that said that you, you kind of crafted and created the STEM program so that all of our students could partake. You said it was for everybody, right? Which, you know, I think that a lot of people think that STEM is just for a very specific subgroup of students, right? But, I think that you've shown that it's really not. You've shown that there's, you put a philanthropic twist on it, right? You've made snowflakes for the elder people. You've used it for fashion shows, right? They use it for, you know, like stage production. So, it runs the gamut of every student that you could have at Oasis. It's not just for the subgroup, right? So, congratulations on being able to introduce STEM to every student, no matter what their upbringing is, no matter what their, you know, that's a pretty amazing thing to do because you're taking something that is, you know, like I said, so many people are afraid of it and you're saying, no, this is for everybody. And that's an amazing thing to do.
Thank you.
Thirdly, you know, going into this brave new world of AI, I'm glad that we have somebody that can understand this and is going to steer our school in this right direction because I think we do need somebody that has their finger on the pulse of this and can kind of steer the ship in the direction that it's going to be going and looking at the trends in, in the ways that we're going to be learning in the future. Because if we're behind the curve on this, it's going to be too late. So, we definitely need somebody steering the ship on that and I'm glad that it's going to be you sitting in that seat.
Well, and I, I think that goes back to the team. So, I, I'm learning as well. I think all of us working together, there's power in numbers. And all of us bring our own expertise to the table. So, I think working together, we can bring those ideas forth and have some good ideas.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions down here? Please, Ms. Atticelli.
Yes, real quick, in regards to this guide that you've done regarding the, the AI, I, I think I heard you say that you submitted that to Superintendent Collins. And do you have an idea what the next steps will be after the superintendent looks at it? Is it, is it going to be your goal to maybe disseminate it to sort of guide the rest of the teachers and staff?
Yeah, I think that's the goal, probably next school year, I would say. The team and I had also started working on some professional learning for teachers. We got to a point, it was winter break and then we came back from winter break and things happened. So, we do need to reconvene to talk more about that. That's kind of our next big goal. But, definitely that document will be out at some point so that you can review it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just a comment. Did you call me?
I think, yeah.
Sorry. Are we going past me? I missed it. But, just a comment on, on the AI part. STEM, fantastic. I mean, that, that program has just always been there for the last few years and we can't do more in, in there than we're doing now. It's fantastic that we're doing it. But, the AI is, is really something that I think for, for most adults, it's an abstract. And to be able to bring it down to the, you know, the elementary level is think, an awesome thing. If you look at what happened just today in a global summit in which Vice President Vance was over there, kind of defining what safe guidelines are, guardrails are, but allowing innovation and creativity to be excelled upon in a manner that, that has those guardrails, is fantastic. And to do it with our youth, having them build that mental knowledge so early in the process, I think it's wonderful. And, and I can only imagine what it's going to do by the time that they're, you know, in high school, what, what capabilities that will bring and nurture. I mean, that, that's probably, probably the science that's out there right now that, that will be more profound than, you know, our challenge to reach the moon and beyond. And I, I really think so because it, it applies in so many areas and it's mind-blowing the order of magnitude at which it's advancing. So, my hat's off to you guys. It's fantastic. Unbelievable to be able to bring that to reality at such a young age and have them starting to utilize their mind and expansive ideas like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do for that.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say that I'm so glad that AI obviously is, we're trying to get it down to the elementary level. But even in myself, a junior in high school, the AI has started while I'm, like, it's a new thing even for me. And one of the people you mentioned on your team, Tamika Breeze, actually like gave my class and I know several other classes, a mini presentation and introduction. And we started implementing AI, but not in a way that obviously we're not plagiarizing, we're not copying directly. We're learning, learning how to use it to our best skills. And I've even, like myself, started to apply it to other classes because there is truly so many benefits. And I feel like there is such a big fear, oh, it's going to be this, it's going to be that. But, I just want to say that it's already being successful and even myself, I've learned so much this year. So, yeah.
That's great to hear.
Okay, three different points. So, back to AI. It was a new thing for me coming, not coming into high school, but like it started picking up more in my sophomore and junior year. And I think the big thing with AI is it has so many benefits for students, but it needs to be instilled at a young age how to use artificial intelligence without compromising an individual's integrity. And that's the huge thing with it. But it, it is such a good productive tool to go about everyday life. And I know I use it to, if I have questions about something and obviously you fact-check, but it is very, very productive tool to use. I was part, I believe, of the first group of eighth graders to use the Gator Garage, right? Yeah.
You were.
And that was right after COVID.
Yes.
And, how do I say this? Like, sorry, it's like a very emotional topic for me. So, I'm going to FIU for physics with a minor in astronomy. And my whole life, I went thinking that like humanity history was like for me. And it was in that area that I realized that STEM was something that was attainable for me. And it was through my physics teacher, Ms. Troy, that really honed that in. So, if it wasn't for the Gator Garage, I wouldn't have gone through this time in my life that I am right now where I, I went through physics, I'm doing environmental, like STEM is for me. And I found that through the Gator Garage. So, and honed in by Ms. Troy. So, if that, if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing. And I know my voice broke a little bit when I talked about it. I'm going to FIU, majoring in physics, minoring in astronomy to hopefully work at UNOSA, which is the United Nations Office for Outer Space Affairs. So, thank you, thank you. I'm very excited for my future, but it wouldn't have been something that I dreamed for myself if it wasn't for the STEM program.
Thank you for sharing that. So, I'm crying.
Yeah, well, no one cries.
Thanks, Sophie. And I'm sure Mrs. McLean is crying at home too. I know she's watching. She's probably hysterical. I remember you as an eighth grader. I remember the passion and drive that you had. And it, it means a great deal for you to say that. So, thank you.
Yeah, of course. That brings me to my question, now that the water works right on. So, there is a huge focus on it right now with elementary school and middle school. And I brought it up in the last council, not council, charter meeting that we had, that how can we bring this to the high school? And the big issue was space, which is totally understandable. And we're facing that now with the student increase. But, I know that we have a band class where high school students go to the middle school for it. Is there any possibility of maybe doing something like that for the Gator Garage? And we do engineering, something like that, where high school students can go to the Gator Garage and have a class? Because I know in my friend group, and I know I said this before, my friend group positively connotated nerds. So,
You're, you're talking to one.
Yeah. I know that one is going into biomedical engineering and you went to a field trip with high school students, or middle school students for biomedical engineering. That would have been right up his alley. Is it maybe something that we can also open those field trips up to high school students? I don't know if the programs that you go to are specifically for middle school or elementary schoolers. But if it's not, maybe opening that up to high school students because there's a lot of interest in STEM at the high school level, myself included.
Yep. Yeah, it's a great question, great point. Mrs. Collins and I, in the past few weeks, have actually been talking about just that.
Oh, really?
Whether or not there's a possibility for middle school teachers to take on some high school classes because of sizing, class sizes. So, it's, it's definitely in the works. We've got some proposals in development and, yeah, I'd love to maybe get your feedback one day, some thoughts at, on school, at the campus, and we can talk about it more to get your insights.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
And I bring it up now, that, not that I'm going to be able to benefit from the fruits of your labor. If that becomes a, a thing, I'll be off in Miami or out of state for, for further education. But, yeah, I just, I'm really excited for the future for, for STEM in the charter school system and everything that's coming up.
Thank you for sharing your story too.
Yeah, of course.
If that wasn't a testament to our school system, I don't know what was.
My gosh, I didn't think I was going to cry tonight, Sophie.
Got a little video, video recording.
You can understand what I was saying when I was talking up here.
No, we got it, loud and clear. Do you have any more comments down here for?
For me, but let's see if anybody else. Just a quick couple of questions, Dr. Om. So, do you interact much with Shelby Bachman from the STEM to Career Committee from the Horizon Council?
No, I know that you mentioned it when we were talking last in January that she was going to contact us about something and we hadn't heard from her yet.
Okay.
So, we're still waiting to hear from her, but I'd love to, to form a, to get in touch with her.
Here's, here's the email from, so we have, as part of the Horizon Council, we have the Horizon Foundation. And we leverage Priority Marketing for a bunch of our stuff. Here's the latest message from today from Priority Marketing. "We'd like to touch base with me to get more information about the STEM students' list of accomplishments that was emailed earlier today." I, my guess is we weren't, Oasis wasn't included in that list. They're going to start a big PR campaign around STEM and want to make sure that we get included in that.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, connect, so, so we can get, this presentation would be phenomenal if I can, if you can share that with me and I'll make sure that she gets it.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much for doing that.
This is why we have Dr. Manaya on our board. Great.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation. That leaves us for our final board comments. So, I'm going to start down here on the end. Ms. Kattin, please.
My son is a kindergartner at Oasis North. And the very first week of school, when he got to walk in and play with Legos and understand that they're not just toys, that he gets to build with dad, he gets to actually use them in school and understand that they're, have a larger purpose. He came home and he was lit up for the rest of the night. And I've been in the STEM lab. I, I've seen Christie interacting with the students and it's just amazing. So, it sounds like everything has been very well-deserved that she's gotten and the STEM program is, as well. Because that was one of, honestly, one of the selling points for my husband and myself for putting our, our children in, in the Oasis Charter School. So, thank you for all of it. I would just like to address the members of the Youth Council for a moment. It takes a lot of courage to come up and, one, to even be part of the Youth Council and, two, then to come in and sit in a room full of adults and share some very personal stories. And it sounds like you're all going up, up and away for fun. But, you're very, you're going to some very great places in the future and I'm excited to see where you go with that. As a former teacher, I know having a list of students and their specific accommodations handed to me that preschool week is a lot to take on. And I know I always did my best, but there were times that I would forget someone would get a particular accommodation or things like that. But I love the fact that you are vocal. And that is something that the more students we can get to be able to understand what their accommodations are. And even if they don't have a 504 or IEP plan, to be able to understand what their individual needs are to help them be successful, I love that you're that example for that because that is a very strong trait that's going to take you very far. And I really appreciate you asking the question about the mental health resources in our school. Um, and I really appreciate you asking the question about the mental health resources in our school. Um, today is not the environment we had 20 years ago. There's new challenges and new struggles and new opportunities that students graduating today are going to experience that we may not have those things in place. So just continue asking the questions and continue asking for what you need because hearing it from you, hearing it from students in the schools about what it is that makes you feel heard, what makes you feel safe, that's what we need. So thank you for being here tonight.
Ms. Satchel.
And this is probably, um, ladies of the Youth Council, you, you guys are probably going to hear that from probably pretty much, uh, everybody on the board, but I just want to say that you ladies were on fire today. Um, you should be incredibly proud of yourselves, how you handled yourselves. And I was listening and I heard the passion, I heard the advocacy, um, and you keep that fire. And I, and what I really appreciated was the fact that you saw, saw an opportunity, you seized an opportunity to have access to the superintendent and other folks that are making decisions about your life and what happens, and you asked the hard-hitting questions. You keep that for yourselves because that will take you very, very far. On top of that, I am so thrilled that we have made again a first step in achieving some of the goals that we had wanted in terms of these, these pay increases for, for, um, our staff and our teachers. And I'm just looking forward that, uh, that we just continue, uh, to do everything we can in that direction.
Please.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you again, um, for this wonderful opportunity. I think it is such a great experience to have students up here to be able to advocate for themselves. And I would really like to recognize all the work that is being done, um, in the STEM area of the schools. Um, I think that all of the advancements that the charter school system is making is going to foster such a beautiful environment for all the students. And I think when you are empowering your students, giving them the ability to advocate for themselves, giving them access to all these resources, is going to foster such a beautiful community. And down the road, you're already seeing so many students applying to go to this school and just fostering that amazing, um, education, the environment is going to bring so many more students, so many more opportunities, and it's just going to shine a very bright light on this school system. And I think the future is so bright for all the advancements that you're making. I really want to applaud you for it because that's awesome.
Well said.
I go to Bishop Perot.
Uh, I, I think for me, it was interesting to, a couple of years back, I think Chris, uh, our chair brought up that, uh, he wanted to have the Youth Council on our board. And, you know, you go to other school board meetings and you might have one representative, right? And I thought, okay, well, how's this going to work? Is this really going to be effective? Is this going to take away from the discussions that we, we have to have as a board? And, uh, thank God that you, you, you moved in that direction. You championed this, this, and I'd like to see a lot, the, the ideas, the contributions, what's going to happen tomorrow with Mrs. Collins when she gets back to her office, let alone what's going to happen down the road. You influenced that today. And I think what, what I've learned, as, as many of us have learned over the years, is you can make a difference, right? And sometimes all it takes is just your, your words and sometimes it takes a collaboration of peers, of collective thought. But, but thank you for being here. Thank you to our chair to champion this. And I look forward to not only your other contributions in future meetings, but your peers' contributions in future meetings, those that are going to come after you. And you've set a very good stage and a very good forum for, hopefully, them to, to emulate and then take well beyond what, what we're able to do today. So thank you.
Um, as somebody who's been in the charter school system all my life, started in kindergarten and I'm going to graduate next year, I never really understood, like, the background and like what went into making all these decisions going into our school. And sitting here today and being able to hear, like, just the small portion and like the little bits and pieces we've talked about today, like, I've gotten a more of understanding of the place I go to school at and what, like, I don't really remember much from elementary school. Kind of always been like in the future kind of person, always thinking about my future. And being able to think back to like, that's why I had that and that's why I got that opportunity is a great experience just to sit here and listen to that. And even like, um, have, how other, um, board members have been, um, saying, how we have to like keep our voices and continue to talk out. I definitely haven't always been like that. And being able to be on Youth Council and get those experiences and get the, be able to speak out and speak my voice and get these opportunities has definitely been so amazing because I wouldn't think about four years ago, three years ago, that I would have been sitting here being able to speak my mind and tell everybody like what my opinions are and what I think our school systems change or like hearing my fellow members on what they, their ideas are. And it's just so inspirational and amazing to be able to sit here and listen to everybody and the changes we're making to our school system. And I'm so excited for the next year and a half I have and the next many years that the charter school, um, system has and the successes that we're going to, you guys are going to build. So thank you so much for allowing me to be here today and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. That's good, yeah.
A colleague of mine on the Youth Council, his name is Member Woodish. He brings up a lot. Children are meant to be seen but not heard. And the Youth Council takes this message and we want to do away with it. We come to this, to these meetings, we have a joint council meeting with the City Council, um, in March, March 4th, where we're going to be doing the same thing, but with the City Council and mayor. And being here is a testament that we are trying to combat that message. We are the future and it's only right that we have our voices heard. Um, and we point out the problem when we see it because if not, it's just going to fester and grow until it's unsolvable. Um, I'm graduating this year and, oh my gosh, again! Graduating this year, 13 years in the system. And I'd like to think that the school system was really a leader in education in this county and if not, in the state of Florida, especially with the STEM program. So, um, very proud to be graduating from Oasis. Thank you.
Uh, I just want to quickly thank the Finance Department again for all their hard work with everything, with the salaries. I know that the administration put a lot of work into it too, but, um, the work that you all did was invaluable. So thank you. I know several of your peers have left already, but we do appreciate it. Um, and then just quickly, thank you for sharing your story. Um, educators rarely, they work very, very hard and they rarely get to see the, um, impacts that they have. And that story that you told will stick with Dr. O for the rest of his life.
My goodness, this is making me emotional too. Um, my whole life, I've been told I'm too loud, I share too many of my opinions, I'm too vocal. And being a part of this council and being here today has just made me show that, that I should further embrace that part of myself because I get a chance to make a difference and it just, and being such a, it's such a blessing being here. And also, um, I've only been in Florida for two and a half years and, um, I was really scared because I had no idea what the school symptoms were going to be like. And my sister got into OMS and a couple of months later, because of how it works, when she got in, I got in and it just grew me so grateful because I had no idea where I would be if I wasn't at the Oasis Charter School System. Um, it's such a great community, there's so many different aspects and it's been so inspiring to just learn what all of you guys do and how everything comes together. And I just, I don't know, I'm just so touched to be here. But, um, thank you guys, it's really been a really educational experience for me. And as someone who really wants to go into government and enhance all of these aspects, um, it's just truly been a great opportunity. Thank you.
Well, uh, I, all I can say is our future is bright. And, uh, just a message to you guys, don't stop what you're doing. Keep pushing the envelope. Don't feel like you're ever exceeding any bounds because you create the boundaries. And, uh, keep that, that target higher than what any one else might expect you to do. Uh, it's wonderful what you're doing and, and you are our future and our future looks well-served. Um, Jackie, thank you for you and your staff, all that you've done in, uh, bringing the salary position along. I wish it could be more and I, I hope that we can maybe make it more in the next few years. Uh, but thank you so much, appreciate it. And it's a pleasure to see, hear what you guys, it really is. Thank you.
Just want to say I'm thoroughly impressed with Youth Council and just want to thank you guys for attending and wanting to learn more about the board. And, uh, thank you for sharing your stories. I think it touched everybody here in this room. Um, once again, congratulations to OEN for receiving, uh, the Program Excellence Award, won in Florida. That's, that's pretty amazing there in our small town, quote unquote. Um, and then just tonight's Class Parity Adjustment Plan vote. You know, I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction. But what I would say, it's a major step towards keeping the charter school competitive in Lee County and, uh, at attracting and retaining our top talent. This is, this is, this is the way we have to go to make sure our teachers don't go anywhere else and then we can keep getting better teachers because here's the fruit of their labor right here. Um, just excited to be a part of it. Thank you, guys.
Nothing to add here, that was awesome. Thank you.
Just from a, um, parent's perspective, going through the system with my three kids and the way the STEM program has developed over the years, just the importance and the blessings of those donors to be able to develop and do what you did is, um, it's quite a blessing and it certainly has quite a lot of impact. And our children are the ones, you know, probably of course, that did, um, from, from all this amazing technology and everything that's been really there. Um, my daughter Kayla is now graduating this year and she is an environmental engineer. She will be an environmental engineer. And she got started also in the very early stages, there was no Gator Garage, but we had, you know, and she was there and everything she did in those early stages of that STEM development and TSA in the middle school is what put Kayla on that path with physics and sciences and math. And, and, uh, you know, only developed it into the high school and, um, that's what led my girl into engineering as well. And, um, so I, I know that, you know, it's just a testament of, you know, how it started and it kept going and going and, and it's just going to, it's just got, excuse me, I can get emotional too. Uh, this guy is a limit and, um, so it's amazing. And, uh, you wouldn't want to be anywhere else in this. So thank you for everything, all the teachers and administrators and again, those donors who gave a million dollars, uh, over the years and helped bring the program up.
So I would hope that, um, Mr. Kilrain, at your council meeting, when you're giving your report on the school, that you could maybe encourage the, your fellow council members to maybe watch this meeting because I think that this is the epitome of a school board meeting.
Both hands is, both.
Is what it's all about, right?
Surely will.
Proof's in the pudding here, so. Um, I think that it was an enormous hurdle that we got over today with the teacher parity. Um, I think that it's, uh, long overdue and much deserved, right? Um, I think that it's an absolute privilege to be part of this system and I'm grateful for it and I think that everybody else probably feels the same. Um, it's a labor of love, we all do it, um, without pay, but it, it's rewarded. I go home after these meetings feeling very good about it, so. And as far as Youth Council goes, I'm, I'm, you know, glad that I got to be a part of this. I'm glad I went to the meeting and invited you. Um, I just kind of came up with this idea a couple of years ago and it seems to be working out well. Um, unfortunately, you know, my term next year, so I won't be here, but hopefully this is a tradition that somebody else will possibly take on after me and we keep doing it, you know? Because, uh, I can truly say that you have all added value to this meeting today. Uh, you've added a different perspective that not everybody gets to see. We sit up here and we don't see that perspective that you've added today. So truly you've added value and I appreciate what you've done today. So thank you so much for all that, so, of course. So that being said, our next meeting is going to take place, uh, here. Um, we are going to have our 4:00 PM scheduled SHADE meeting, followed by our 5:00 PM meeting right after here in Council Chambers. Uh, that being said, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Great meeting, everybody.
Thank you.